Okay, now, 5.01, the budget amendments. Ms. Klutz, if you're ready, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. I have two budget amendments for you today. The first one's state. This was the adjustment for the ADM reversion. We came in just a little bit below or above the hundred adjustment, and I gave you a little bit of information on that. That came to $240,961 that the state adjusted from us, and those are in the different categories that you'll see there. And then the other areas are increases, I'm happy to tell you. And so that gives us a net negative adjustment to the state budget of $43,000. So I'll take any questions on the state budget amendment.
Okay.
And then we'll flip over to our federal. And I'm happy to tell you that we have all positive adjustments to the federal budget. Both are EC related, and these are specific grants that we request for specific related services or specific children with individual needs, and they total $81,000. Any questions about those?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Klutz. Board members, anybody got any questions, or you're okay for the consent agenda on the 12th? May I get an acknowledgement? Okay, it goes to the consent agenda, Ms. Klutz, for the 12th. All right, let's see, now, we have, moving forward, 5.02, board members, we're gonna have Dr. Sane to come talk with us also about early college, and also, we'll just do the county, the Cabarrus County Schools academic calendar, we'll do both of those simultaneously. Thank you.
I'm gonna bring you some good news tonight. The State Board has given State Superintendent June Atkinson the authority to grant the LEA waivers on the calendar. A motion to grant the authority to the State Superintendent to grant those waivers of up to five instructional days, if the days are to be used for specific professional development purposes, was approved by the State Board of Education today. I will tell you that that's exactly what we intended to do with our five instructional days. We want to make them teacher instructional days, so as we go forth with the new curriculum and the higher standards that you've been hearing about, our students will be prepared. We're excited to tell you that we don't have to change the calendar.
And that is good news.
So I'll take back the calendar for early college, and we'll rework that, no problem, and we'll get back with you next month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Sane. Now, we can continue on, board members, with 5.03, and that is also Dr. Sane. No, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold it, hold it, hold it. I got mixed up, we'd uncovered that. Okay, so now, we're gonna move on to Mr. Wickie again. We're gonna talk about the Central Cabarrus High School, the switches, those type things. Is Mr. Wickie still in the room, or has he left?
He probably thought he had a lot of good.
There he comes. Here he comes. We've had some technical difficulties tonight, and you just sort of learn to roll with the punches, though, folks, and so we're gonna make it. Mr. Wickie, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The bids that were received on Central Cabarrus High School's IT projects were very favorable. They came in well below budget. The successful bidders combined were at $225,130 and one penny, and, as I found out later, this $27,000 that I had in savings was actually more like $30,000 below the budget. So we're recommending, along with the superintendent, to, that the board provide a contract to the firm of iConnect for the both, for the base bid and alternate bids, in the amount of $75,881.81, and that's, that's for the cabling work and associated work for that wiring. And the superintendent further recommends that the board award a purchase order to CNIC to supply all the required network hardware equipment for the project at the amount of
Okay, board members, you have the tabulations there, you have the report from Mr. Wickie. You have any comments, questions, or do we go to the action, the consent agenda for the 12th?
Of course, I just have to ask it, because Mrs. Minnet didn't beat me to it. Are any of these companies local? Where are they located?
I should know that, but I don't. I will say that most of the firms are out of Charlotte.
Pretty sure, I'm quite sure iConnect is a local firm.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with that.
But I don't recall.
I'm not sure about CNIC.
Right. I will find that out for you.
I have a next name.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, board members, we're gonna move on, so this'll go to the consent agenda on the 12th, and Mr. Wickie'll give us that information about the location of these particular vendors. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have one action agenda item tonight, 6.0, and Mr. Wickie's at the podium, and he's gonna talk with us about the Northwest Cabarrus Gym Project. Mr. Wickie.
Yes, the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe you've all seen the, the plans proposed for the revised, what we are calling Option 2A, and, in effect, this option is probably the best of all worlds, considering all the things that we've looked at on the project. It, in fact, takes the bleachers and drops that level down, so the bleachers would be at the same level as a gym floor. It gives the school cross-court capabilities, and thus, greater opportunity to provide educational classes within the gym, as well as cross-court play when needed. It adds new lockers, showers, and toilet facilities, which would be, would have to be replaced because of the lowering of the bleacher floors. It adds them in an area between the existing school and the existing gymnasium, so there's little impact visually on the overall building. And in doing that, it does it in a very economical way, because all the utilities and all that serve the gymnasium, of course, could be partially serving this new addition as well. The, all of the facilities would be AD accessible, so it eliminates the need for an elevator, which, as you look at it from my standpoint, I don't like to maintain elevators, so that's a huge plus in that regard. And, and it does provide distance around the courts, so that we have the safety, both for wrestling, as well as basketball and other activities. And the cost is projected by the architects, and it is an estimate, but it's estimated at $2.2 million for construction. We've shown a contingency of 10%, and a design fee of roughly 10%, as well as an administrative fee of $44,000, for a total project cost of $2.684 million. In looking at the existing funds available, and this is sort of going back to some of the discussions we've had in the past with the board, I've included not only the original construction monies, which is shown here as 1.497220, that number included the money from the, originally, there was a project to modify the entrance and the, the overall canopy that leads into the building. We've taken that, that construction dollar funds and put that into, into this project. And then we've also recommended to the board that they consider, that you consider, excuse me, adding a portion of the monies from the practice fields that were to be constructed at Boger, and take $310,400 from that project. And by the way, that does leave approximately $230,000 in that project to do rough grading and site drainage work, to at least give a field of play. It, it wouldn't have the concessions and bathroom facilities, it wouldn't have the track, but it would at least be a practice field for the kids to use. It also takes the money away from the Beverly Hills Elementary School chiller and controls, and that's $305,956. And if you recall, that project, we, we felt we could put off a couple of years, and hopefully find additional monies to, to pay for that. And then it took the, there, there were existing fees that the architect had not used on this initial project, that they had not, in other words, they were, they were assigned a fee to do the studies and, and the actual design and construction documents for the overall project, and $70,500 of that has not been spent. So we put that into the, into the mix, and it gives us an available sum of money of So taking that amount of money away from the total project cost, we have a estimated deficit of approximately $499,924. And that's the money that, that we really have not come up with a magical way of solving at this point, except to ask the board, to ask the county for that, for that funding. It is a possibility to, as we talked about earlier, of, of requesting it from the, from DPI via the QSCB Round 2 monies. The only issue there is, there's no guarantees, as we talked about as well, that that money will be available to us. But I think that the project, unfortunately, cannot be done partway. We have to do the whole project, or we don't do it at all. And the, if, and I, I won't ask Steve to say this again in public, but we're getting to a point where we have to kind of make a decision, from a timing standpoint. It's, Steve, if I could ask you, roughly, start to finish, from this point to completion, what are you estimating time-wise? Sure. My name. Mr. Steve Wallace with Morrisburg Architects.
Good evening. I think if we were given approval to start design on this, we would probably have it done by the start of the next school year, and then bid it, and then they would start work probably in October, November timeframe.
Right. So, starting, you know, in '13?
Starting, starting in...
Oh, this, this, this year?
This year, yeah.
Okay, good, so we'd be done by...
Yes, because we had a deadline of, of 2014 to get everything completed, so...
Right, yes. And it's just, as we delay on the decision, it, it gets us closer and closer to the deadline of spring of 2014. So we, we need to keep the decision process going, and, and hopefully, the board will support that.
Well, I think, Mr. Wickie, in all honesty, the, the problem that we've had has not been, I don't think it's this board, you know, I mean, it's coming up with the money, and, you know, we've made a formal request to the county for the 1.9 million, and now we've come up with, you know, an alternative, which actually will be, in my opinion, equally as good, with just a few things. The ADA we won't have, but we've got a situation here that, that's gonna rectify that. But the problem is the same with a lot of things, it's the funding, and there's where the, the decision, why it hasn't been made, because, you know, obviously, you, we can make the decision, I think it'd be 7-0, yes, go ahead and do this, because we, we know it needs to be done, but the problem is, is getting the funding. And as I had mentioned to you earlier, it's always good to have a contingency, and we've got 10% set aside for a contingency, and, you know, we might, could consider reducing that, but then again, you're working with an old structure, you don't know what you're gonna be running into with some of the, the older parts, particularly where the bleachers are now, with those, with those knee walls there, what's behind there, what, you know, we like to speculate and think it would go real smooth, but, and all, but my gut feeling is, is there, we're probably, probably not gonna get any additional funding. That's my gut feeling, and just from the talk that we've had, and from what we read in the paper, and what we hear the various commissioners talk about, but it is a decision, though, that we need to make, and stick with whatever we decide to do. And so, at this time, I'd like to open this up for discussion with the board, and, and this is Ms. Minnet, it's one of her favorite subjects, is athletics, so we're gonna start on her end today. Thank you, Ms. Minnet.
Well, I'm, let me say, very pleased that, after working all of this, and talking all of this, and maybe my comments later, forced a little bit of it, but, you know, you, you start with a great idea, and then you realize, get into reality, and so I really think you've worked hard and gotten it down to bare bones. So I'm not sure how necessary it is that this project be done this year, but if the rest of the board believes that it should be a priority, then I would go along with that. But I also kind of question whether it's gonna go, you know, have a success with the other board, but we'll just have to wait and see.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Ms. Carpenter.
Well, one of the things, and here again, now, with a grace you can appreciate this, you know, when I look at this, I look at it, and I see half a million dollars, and I look at that, and I say, gee, that's almost a half cent on the tax rate, and, yeah, half a penny, and I look at that, and I can see the commissioners look at it, and that, that cent, and we all read the paper, and know what, what they'd be looking at. Now, I can look at it a couple ways. I can say, well, gee, you know, and we, we've heard what our budget looks like, and we can look at this at a couple different, take this a couple different angles. We could look at it, and we could say, well, I know that they want that field, but we could say, well, there's another $200,000, we could just not do that, that they want their gym more than anything else, because they can't use it like it is. Not do anything, and we could bring in another $200,000 and not do anything on that field, and say, okay, commissioners, we've scrounged up another 200,000, or 250, is it 250, or 2...
It's 210,000.
210?
210,000.
210?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you, can you maybe squeeze me another, here, we, we're meeting halfway here, you know, can you maybe get me 250? We'll meet you half and half. Another option we have, huh?
It's 230, excuse me.
230, okay, I might gotcha half, let's make a deal. Let's make a deal here, because I think those parents maybe would like their, their auditorium before they're, and maybe push that field out, another, another thing. I, I'm sitting here trying to make a deal here, but tell the commissioners, here, we're gonna give you another, another deal here. The other option we have is, and I, and I'm one that don't like to touch fund balance, and Kelly's gonna come over the desk here, I know, I, 'cause I'm one, I don't like to touch fund balance, but that is savings, and you do that for, when, when you save for those rainy days. I think it's pouring now. I mean, I do, you know, but that's, that, that is another option, because we're up against a wall here. But take that 250 and do this. I'm, I'm throwing options out here, because that gymnasium has been, has been promised, and, and you can't utilize it, because there's, it's dangerous. We can't do that. Now, this is just some options I'm throwing out here, to get that project done. Or, the other option is, to try to, to ask commissioners, but I'm with you, Lynn, in talking, there, there, it is, it's, it's tough times, you know, they are looking, and they're scrounging, and I don't think the money's there, but that's just some options that I've given.
Good comments, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger, you wanna carry on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I'd just like to say publicly that Steve and his team did a remarkable job of taking something that we've, we've had to look at multiple times, and, and, Mr. Wickie, you being an architect, you understand the, the creative process of, one day you wake up, and it, it just looks different, and you figure out a, a way to get around a constraint that you've had heretofore, and all of a sudden, you've got a new idea, and we, that, that process took us from needing 1.9, having our hat out, and we still have it out, but we needed 1.9, down to 500. If, if, if there's other things in play to whittle the number down, I'm all for it. I think as far as what we're here to do tonight is to formally decide to ask for it. I, I can't read their minds, you know, Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Schu, I think, you know, they may be right, we don't know whether we'll get it or not, but I'm in favor of at least asking. I think it's worth doing, and if we could do one other quick thing, we had a list of four things that this project accomplished, and I don't know if Steve has that list, or you, could, could you just tell us as a board the four things that this project accomplishes?
If I can put my fingers on it. Because Steve did a really nice job of writing it up, but I think I have a copy of it. It addresses through, through the reduction of the bleacher wall, or elimination of the bleacher walls, and it corrects a safety issue. It provides room for the PE classes to occur. It addresses the ADA compliance issue, and it increases spectator seating. So those four items are the significant changes.
That's right, and, and I guess what I wanted to make sure we knew was, increasing seating capacity is fourth on the list, you know. One time, we, we talked about, it was not fair, that Northwest could only hold a certain amount of people, they can't hold the conference basketball tournament, whatever, but at the end of the day, that's fourth on the list, and those other three things are, are mightily important, especially when you talk about safety, which sort of rocketed to the top after, after this fall. So, in any event, Mr. Chairman, I, I would support that we ask the commissioners for the, the additional funding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Blackwelder.
And I'm with Blake. This, being part of the construction subcommittee, this has been a little bit of a painful process. But I also want to make sure that we understand, you know, how we got here. There's been a lot of talk, you know, there's been a lot of stuff in the paper, but, Lynn, did you have the exact time when we approved the QSCB between the county commission and our Board of Education? What year, actually, we did that?
Oh, it was 2010.
2010. Yeah, so 2010, and it took them how long to sell the bonds?
April last year.
So, that's a, that, that was one of the issues that I think everybody doesn't understand. It took a while for them to actually sell the bonds. We didn't get to get started right out of the gate when we approved this process between the two, so that's really put a delay in our time schedule. And then we have to complete these by when?
By April of 2014.
Okay, so, you know, we have to think, at some point in time, we've got to do this project. You know, here, I filed for a new position, as you all know, so I'm thinking, you know, I may be in another seat in another year, looking at going, okay, what are y'all thinking? Or, you know, oh, well, you could, could have done it a lot cheaper, then we're gonna have to do it in a couple of years, because it's gonna have to be done, either this route or another funding mechanism, so they need to keep that in mind, and it's gonna be much more expensive. I've tried to tell people, you know, if you'd have come to me two or three years ago and said, give me a price on a house, if you think you're gonna get the same price today as you got two or three years ago, you're wrong, and that's what we need to equate this to, you know. Numbers go up, materials and labor go up. We set a project list with an estimate on all these projects two, three, four years ago, before we even actually approved all these projects, so of course, they've escalated in cost, and that's where we are, and that's why we're over budget in a lot of these. So I do support the project, I think not to do it now, it's gonna cost us more later, we're gonna have new codes to come in soon. If we don't get moving on this, it's gonna do nothing but go up, so I'm looking at this from two sides, and I, I really do feel like we need to move on it. It addresses the top priorities, our safety, there's a lot of issues out there, we're gonna have to take care of one way or the other, and this is the way to do it. With that interest rate, we will never get that again, and neither will the county commissioners. So I definitely support it.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Ms. Burton-Ball.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think anybody has to guess that I support it. Having spent a lot of days in that gym as a parent, as a volunteer for the state Special Olympics basketball tournament, two years, and the challenges that gym poses, not just structurally, but my dad, as many of you know, was in a walker and a wheelchair for about 10, 12 years, and he could not see his granddaughter's cheer. He, you know, he did not, would not have been, if he had still been alive, to see, you know, my younger daughter and whatnot, she, he, he would not have been able to be in that gym, so I have a, a real personal spot for the, the ADA requirements. Having said that, just wanted to share some history, I think some of you know, some may not know. Some years ago, the Northwest Cabarrus High School Boosters Club had graded, actually cleared and graded by rules with the EPA, one acre per year maximum and whatnot, and had created a practice field on what I would call the top of the Boger property. There were six acres we had bought as a board some 10, maybe 12 years ago. When Boger was built, we combined the 20 acres that we purchased from the Boy Scouts with that six acres, it was cleared and regraded as one property, and I still have the documents. One of the things I've kept over the years was that particular architect's drawing that showed they were supposed to flat grade that top of the hill. Drainage was not provided at that time, whatnot, but anyway, so we, we took it from parents who made it a usable surface for a couple years ago, and it regressed because of, I think, at that time, and that architect is not present in the room, so, it's not the current one we're dealing with, but there was a mistake made, basically, under previous construction leadership from our district and whatnot. So if, if we do the fields now, and that's why I asked for the prep work, the boosters club and those active parents can begin adding amenities. They won't be able to fund, obviously, a track, but they could add maybe some fencing, maybe bathrooms, different boosters clubs have done that at schools over the years. So, but if we don't have a usable surface, there's really not a center spot to say, this is what we're working around now as far as the design. That's why I think it's so important to get it graded, get it drained. They can use it as a field, they certainly have three schools who would use it in one place, so it would be well-used during the, during the academic day and, and in the evenings for the community. And just from the standpoint of the gym, the gym is not just, it's, you know, a school thing, too. I mean, yes, it's, it's academic, we need those requirements, but it's a gathering spot, so, like I said, whether it be for the, the kid on crutches, or the grandparent coming to watch the child. And, Mrs. Carpenter, I just got this information recently, because I was curious about this whole county tax situation, and a penny is now, on the tax rate, is now $1.7 million. And so, when we're looking at this amount of money, which I'm going to propose we reduce slightly, but we're looking at less than a third of a penny. So, the good news is, it's a very small amount, but it has a very big impact during the academic day and throughout the week, and we see the desire for community groups to use our facilities, just like the Special Olympics I spoke of. So I think, one of y'all mentioned, I don't remember who down there, about reducing the contingency slightly, I think, Mr. Chairman, you said. If, if that was reasonable, Lynn, knowing that we have a couple other things that have come in under budget, just like the one we have just gone through, that will be on consensus agenda, consent agenda, if it would be comfortable to lower contingency even by $30,000, to put it more in maybe that eight to nine percent range, or I guess that would, let's see, $30,000 be 10, yeah, I guess about $30,000 or so. I'm just thinking to get it down to, just to show that we're, we're not stockpiling money to do something extra with that money, and we're not going to give it back. I think that would be a sign that we're not just shooting for, and about $500,000, we're coming in at something that's, that's much more reasonable. So that would be my suggestion as well, to drop that down to whatever you would feel comfortable, perhaps an eight percent level.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to tell, we're working on preliminary estimates for construction, we, we don't really know what we're gonna get into and tear into when we do. I, I think, and it's always hard, at, at this juncture, to say, sure, let's take it down to, you know, 190 or whatever, and, and I appreciate what you're saying about the $500,000 versus below the $500,000. It is psychological, more than anything else. Before we do that, though, let me, let me say, there, there are some projects that we had below the line, in addition to the fields. There's, there's a couple of projects at Concord High School, the weight room, and the emergency, excuse me, the vocational building. There's the, we still had money in for the Mount Pleasant boiler replacement, and the Weinkoff wireless controls. If you add all that up, that's about just under $400,000. There's a gamble here, but if we convince the county to look to the future, go with QSCB Round 2, put these projects back into that list, although they'd have to be below some of the other things that Kelly has on her list, I'd offer at least some of those projects as a way to reduce this, this deficit number even more. I don't, it would be hard, it would be hard for us to cover it all, and I think there's a risk in that, because you're sort of spending every dime you've got in your pot, and, and I, we have no idea, I mean, we're, we're gonna be bidding three projects that, in total, exceed a couple million dollars. We're hoping that they come in, we'll know this week where those are at. If those come in well below budget, then, yes, then I think we're in great shape, but right now, it's, it's really pushing the corners a bit, and I'd like to say that, you know, we, we could do this on our own, and then just put everything off to Round 2 of QSCB, but as we just talked, we don't know how much money is in that pot right now. If they, if DPI has given monies out or made commitments to other counties, we just don't know that. So I think that, that is the issue, I think, hopefully, Mr. Chairman, you'll find... I think, hopefully, Mr. Chairman, you'll find out a little bit tomorrow as to where the comfort level of the county board really is. And if QSCB round two is a possibility, I think that there are things we can do. We've already made some improvements in the weight room, as an example, at Concord High School. They're not fully made, but they've got paint, they've got a corrected floor, they've got new lighting in there. They've got things that are making it a usable space. And we can do more over time with existing operating funds. So it's one option. It's a way of reducing the number even further.
Well, I guess I would suggest, I think this is a well-thought-out plan as far as funding. I'd like to thank you and the architects and the construction committee members for the creativity, because all of the elements are there that are so important. And in a way, it preserves some of that history of the school, too, because it is that smaller, cozier gym. So it's not gonna be a big, new high school gym, but it's going to give all those elements that we need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burtonbaugh. Mr. Fur, you have your comment.
Well, I'm at the end again, but in defense of a misminded, she is a sports fan, she's just a Duke fan. So I don't know if that counts or not. But, yeah. But anyway, I agree with each member of the board. Each one of them had very good things to say, real thought-out decisions that we got to make are tough sometimes, but we put a lot of thought in this. We've looked like we need to, there's a common ground we gotta meet. You know, from day one, I was for this project. I know from the first time it was brought up, I said, this is something that we got to do, we need to do for the reasons you've already given us. But even if it is trying to come up, well, first of all, we got to hear what the commissioners got to say. But after that, if we got to go to Plan B, we need to react quickly. And I'm confident that we can find, Kelly can find the funds. We always seem to do that. But, I mean, I just think it's, as a board, we need to stay together on this and try to get this thing accomplished as soon as possible.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion? Since you're having your meeting tomorrow, and that is gonna really give us a lot of information, and then those bids come in this week, we'll know those by the next meeting, next Monday night. We'll, that's a voting night, anyway. So can we not just hold the rest of this discussion with the results of your meeting and then the bid results? And that'll kind of give us a better idea of where we're at, what that looks like?
Well, actually, you know, what I was gonna recommend is, because time is of the essence. And as you all know, and as, of course, Mr. Wickie and, you know, Steve there, that we have to use these funds by 2014. And if, see, we've got to sort of think beyond what the commissioners are gonna do. If they say, well, look, guys, what we've been hearing all along is, we don't have the money. You know, we got to do this and we got to do that. We're looking at a 17.6 million deficit with the tax neutral, this and all the stuff that we've been hearing. Well, let's look at it. They don't approve it. Where does that leave us? We have a choice. And I agree with what Mr. Fur said, and I believe, agree with Ms. Burtonbaugh. I don't want to see us take funds away from Boger to go to Northwest, when those folks deserve that, so they can use that field, where it's just ground, idle ground laying there that can't be used. And we need to use that money for that. All right, now, the question that I have, it would be for Ms. Klutz. How much or can we take from our fund balance to fund a portion of this project legally? Because difference between capital improvements and operating funds, and I'm just wondering, you know, how that is intermingled or whatever. Because if we can determine that we can use some fund balance, then my opinion would be to reduce the contingency, as Ms. Burtonbaugh and myself had suggested, reduce it by 30 or 40,000. And then ask, we could still ask the commissioners for a smaller amount and give them, you know, 200,000 or 100,000 that we need, and we'll take the difference from our fund balance. So the question is, can we do that legally?
You, as a board, can appropriate whatever level of fund balance you want to the project. That has not gone through your budget process.
Well, I do understand that. But we've got a decision that we've got to make here. And, you know, we have a choice to either get this project on the move or put it off for a year and potentially lose the QSCB funds for this project. Is that right, Mr. Wickie? If we don't lose, use it, we lose it. Is that right?
Yes. What my recommendation at that point would be is to do something else. My recommendations are, at that point, would be to do something else with the money rather than use, lose it. We would suggest looking at other projects in place of it.
Well, that's the part also I wanted to find out. Now that we know that we can do that, Ms. Klutz, that part's settled with me. We can do it, the board can do that, all right? Now, and as Ms. Blackwelder mentioned, maybe we'll know something tomorrow, maybe we won't, because they still got a lot of their budget process to go through as well. So we don't really know how far along they are. They're in the discussions now about the tax rate, which will determine. Some says it's gonna go up, some says it's not. Some says 10, 12 percent, you know, or cents, and some says half that. So we don't really know where we are on that. And it's expected of us to make a decision, though. And so there's gonna have to be a little bit of speculation here, and something that I don't like, really. I don't like to spend money that I don't know where it's gonna come from. But I've heard Mr. Williams in past times say, we'll find the money. And that's where Ms. Klutz comes in. So what I'm saying is, do, does the board want to move forward with this project? Or do you want to put it off another week and see what, how the county feels? And so that's the decision that I would like for us to make tonight. Ms. Burtonbaugh?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we need to make the motion, at least as roughly as presented here, in order to show the county commissioners that we are united, that we do share the opinion as a board, that this is a necessary project. I'm concerned if we don't vote on it tonight, that the commissioners may tell you, Mr. Chairman, that, well, your board isn't. How do you expect them to vote if your board hasn't voted yet?
That's my thing.
So I think we need to give that affirmation, that we're asking, we're saying, this is a great compromise of a solution, thanks to a lot of minds that came up with it. We found as much money as we can, not being a revenue generating board, and we need some help, so.
Well, I'm in agreement with that. I'm in agreement with that. The rest of the board, how you feel?
I have a question.
Yes.
Does that mean, because we've heard some other discussion of other areas of funding, I would go along with that the way we had it originally. I would not go along with that if we're talking about just getting into some other areas that I heard that perked my ears up, some of the technology issues and so forth, that we're gonna be set aside to help pad this. So what exactly are we going to be asking? I want to know exactly what we're gonna be asking for and where the funding is coming.
Yes, it would be the motion as presented. We're just gonna formally ask the county to fund the difference here, the deficit of this project. And the board can, you know, we can, and this is an action agenda tonight, this is the action part. So what I would do at this point is, I would entertain a motion that we accept the item for discussion here to ask the county formally for the deficit on this project.
Mr. Chairman, before, I'm sorry, I'm on. You might have. Lynn, can you tell me which projects are being bid against, without me having to go back through there and pull that up?
It's the, it's the Central Center, Central Cabarrus High School, the elementary school and middle school, Mount Pleasant, those three projects, the chiller replacement and controls, so.
So those were the smaller numbered projects? They're not significant in dollar value, right?
I'll tell you in a moment. Well, I'm looking, I'm looking. We changed this around a little bit, so I gotta, Central is not here for some reason, Let me try a different list. I'm sorry.
Well, he's looking. Board members, I have a suggestion. What if we did the motion as presented with an addition at the end to say, with consideration to adjust the requested supplemental funding based on upcoming bid results?
Yeah, I like the verbiage on that bidder. My suggestion, Mr. Chairman, was not completely your meeting tomorrow. I mean, that would give us an idea. But my thought about the bids coming in, if they were under, that may be a, as much as some of those projects have come under, that was a significant amount of monies. And I'd like to know that before we actually do anything else. So if we're gonna do it tonight, I didn't think a week was that big a difference. I mean, I know, you know, to me, the chair and vice chair tomorrow, you just telling them that the board was united in the thought of asking for funding, whatever that might be, would be significant enough. But to be able to tell them, you know, a dollar figure without us knowing, some of those, I really don't support that. I really would like to know what the bids are gonna come in, and if we are able to, you know, allocate any of those funds to this project and lower that number, because it is a significant amount of money, so.
Well, I can accept that, Ms. Blackwelder. And the bids will be taking place tomorrow, is that right, Mr. Wickie?
It's on the eighth, sir.
The eighth, okay. That's what, Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday.
Well, maybe it would be okay for the board to authorize Mr. Wickie to prepare that letter and ask for the difference under what those bids come in, if they come in under budget. Say, instead of 500,000, we'll be asking for 420, 450, that number.
My thought is, and the reason why I say this is because they're not gonna be able to take any action, just the chair and the vice chair tomorrow. So it's not like that's gonna go before their board, and we're missing an opportunity here. They still have to get that on their agenda, make a decision. So it's not like we have to make that tonight.
It is on their agenda. There's a placeholder on their agenda that we've got to meet their deadline. I'm not sure what.
But their meeting's not till two Mondays from now. We'll have a meeting of our own action items, then they'll have theirs, skip a weekend, and they'll have theirs. So we'll meet that guideline, no matter what, even if we waited till next Monday. So that's what I was.
Can we do this motion with my additional statement with consideration to these bids?
I like that.
Yeah, that's what I was, basically, saying the same thing, you know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that the Northwest Cabarrus High School Gymnasium Edition Project be approved as presented at a cost of $2,684,000. And that the Board of Education will formally request up to $500,000 in additional funding to fully fund this project through consideration, or through construction. Consideration to adjust the requested supplemental funding will be adjusted based on the upcoming bid results.
I couldn't have said it better. I thought she, my sentiments, exactly. Okay, board members, you all heard the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter seconds the motion, and board members, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, 7-0. Ms. Monroe, you have the verdict there on that. And Mr. Wickie, you have anything else you want to add?
Just add, I hate to leave a figure hanging. It's approximately 1.3 million dollars between the three projects.
I'm sorry, Lynn.
I'm sorry, 1.8 million dollars between the three projects.
1.8 would be the total bid package for those three?
Yes, for those three.
That's a large amount of money, so hopefully, we'll do well in that.
I just like, what, maybe this is showing, we are, I mean, we, one thing to consider. When we first went here, we asked for 1.9. I think this is showing we are really trying.
That we're really trying to work, because, you know, now we've come back and we've got it down to 500,000. And again, we're still trying to work and get it lower. So we're showing, we're trying to be very conservative in trying to save as much as we can, but still get the project and get what we need to be safe, to be as conservative as possible, and get the most we can for the tax dollar.
One other comment from Mr. Fur. This process shows that you don't have to have a Dean Dome, you can have a Cameron indoor. And you still produce excellent basketball in both places.
All right. Board members, I want to thank you all for your, you know, for your diligence tonight, your due diligence that you all spent on these subjects that we talked about. I think we made some good decisions. And so at this time, I think that we're through our agenda and it's ready to close out. So do I have a motion that we adjourn?